Welcome everyone to the September 28th Planning Commission meeting. So we'll go ahead and have roll call, please.
Chairperson Blake?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Silman? Commissioner Adams?
Here.
Commissioner Brookman? Commissioner Dale? Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Campbell, would you lead us in pledge of allegiance, please?
The Honored to thank you.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so now we're at public comment on items that are not on the agenda. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. And public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be listed or limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Ashley, do we have any written requests for items not on the agenda?
There are no written requests.
Okay, and do I have any appearance of interested citizens? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to Planning Commission business. Ask, I'm gonna ask Planning Commissioners, should you have any interest in modifying the agenda before you this evening? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Vanessa.
I second it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the approval of our July 27th meeting. Any modifications necessary, otherwise we'll look for a motion? Oh, it is August 20. I felt like July was a while ago, but that's what it says, sorry. I was just reading.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the August meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you all. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right. So now we'll move on to business items. Business item, agenda item number five specifically is the consideration of an 18-month time extension for tentative subdivision map 20-06 at Dunn Ranch. So Ashley, please for staff report.
Hello.
Hi.
So tonight, I'm gonna keep these presentations nice and brief. The item before you tonight is for an extension of tentative subdivision map 20-06. This map was approved by the Planning Commission on January 27th, 2021. And since that time, it was approved with four phases. And since that time, two of the phases have had a final map prepared and recorded for them. But there are two additional phases that no final map has been recorded on. The applicant has requested an 18-month extension per the municipal code that is granted. So we, as city staff, have determined the conditions of approval remain valid, and we, there's no reason to deny it in our minds. Just to give you a little bit of context, this is the Dunn Ranch subdivision. It's located off of Royal Ranchero. You can see here on the map that there are parcels that have already been subdivided, and the homes are currently being built there. And then the phases three and four are on the south, and that's the portion that a final map has not been recorded on yet, which is why the applicant is seeking an extension. This is the tentative map as approved by the Planning Commission in January. And as part of the original approval, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared and approved. And as nothing really has changed with the project since then, no additional environmental review is needed. So we, as staff, recommend approval of this 18-month time extension for Dunn Ranch tentative subdivision map 20-06, which would then result in a new expiration date of July 27th, 2024. And the applicant, Mr. Royce Dunn, is here. If you have any questions for him or questions for staff, we are happy to take those at this time.
Thank you, Ashley, for that precise presentation. Appreciate it. So fellow commissioners, any comments, concerns?
No comments.
I have none, none for me.
All right, well with that, we'll make a, or would you, Mr. Dunn, would like to speak to this at all? You have my...
It's just a privilege to listen to you folks.
Well, aren't you kind? So with that, we'll look for a motion for the recommendation of staff.
I'll make a motion that the commission approve an 18-month extension of time for tentative subdivision map 20-06 pursuant to City Municipal Code Section 8-2.610, resulting in a new expiration date for this tentative map of July 27th, 2024.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And with that, we pass, so congratulations. We look forward to new development. So item number six, thank you.
I just want to thank you very, very much.
Very welcome. Thank you for beautifying our community. So consideration of a general plan amendment 22-05 and rezone 22-06 to rezone 467 Gray Avenue from single-family residential, which is R-1, to neighborhood commercial C-1. X to the 28th power, I don't know what that means. So again, Ms. Ashley, hi.
Hello, I will hopefully explain that X to the 28th power. So this item is a general plan amendment and rezone, as listed on the agenda. We are requests, or the applicant has requested a general plan amendment from single-family to neighborhood commercial, and that would include a rezoning from R1 to C1. The overlay zone, I'll explain a bit later in the presentation. So the property in question, the subject property, is at the corner of Franklin Avenue and Gray Avenue, Franklin Road, I mean. You can see it here on the map. It currently is a single-family residence on the property. And you can kind of see in relation where it's adjacent to. There's commercial just to the west of this property there, along Gray Avenue and Franklin Road. So here's our general plan map. The existing land use, as mentioned, is residential, single-family residential. And the proposed land use is shown in the pink. It's that neighborhood commercial. And I wanted to draw your attention to how there is that general plan land use designation just to the west of this parcel. And this area is kind of a transitionary, transitioning space. So we feel comfortable with this proposal. And the zoning, it is R1, single-family, and we're proposing a rezone to C1-X28. So what X28 means, that's a special overlay district. And when, through the municipal code, it allows for these overlay districts that can kind of give special requirements, as you could say, for development of these parcels. And so we, as staff, have determined through the analysis of the project application that an overlay district is, would do well for this project to kind of outline the requirements in regards to the masonry-style block wall on the north side of the property. The existing wooden fence that's located will have to be removed because it's a non-conforming fence. And then also some stipulations about future environmental review and the bus stop that's adjacent. So those are specific characteristics of the zoning that will be applied to this parcel in addition to the regular zoning code. So as, kind of as I mentioned, when this project, when the residence is converted to a commercial use, they'll be required to meet all of the development standards as outlined in the C1 zoning district, as well as the X28 requirements. So they'll have to, you know, abide by the building heights, setbacks, landscaping, parking, access, et cetera. And staff has performed a preliminary environmental assessment of this project and have determined that it falls within the categorical exemption outlined in the SEQUA guidelines, Section 15301, existing facilities, which exempts the conversion of single-family residences to office uses because the applicant is proposing to convert the single-family home to a medical office. And I did want to note that since the agenda packet was distributed, the resolution has been updated to add some clarity and further evidence as to why staff feels that this project meets the required findings. So that amended resolution is with your agenda. It's also available, if anyone would like it, in the foyer. And the findings are listed as well in the presentation. I won't bore you and read them all. But, so finding number one, the project is consistent with the general plan goals and policies. So we've highlighted those general plan goals and policies that this project is consistent with. And that it's consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance to promote and protect public health, safety, peace, comfort, convenience, and general welfare. And as well that it will provide open space, light, air, convenience, aesthetic value, good things to the community. So our recommendation is that we conduct a public hearing and then adopt the amended resolution to approve this project. And I did want to note that we have the applicant, Ms. Gorsy, is here, and her daughter, Dr. Gorsy, is available on Teams, if there are any questions.
Thank you. All right, well, before turning it back to commissioners for questions or concerns, we'll open a public hearing. So if you have any concerns about this project, now is a good time to display them to us. Seeing, yes. At the podium, sir, thank you. That's okay, please list your name, your address.
My name's Andrew Fisher. I'm a resident at 1083 Franklin Avenue. It is Franklin Avenue, not Franklin Road. Franklin Road's on the other side of 99. So I have some concerns with the building of a commercial space. Understand it's a transitional space, and my understanding of that is that that's going from urban to residential. And at this time, all the urban, all the other commercial properties are on the west side of Gray. They want to move it on to the east side of Gray, which is a completely wholly and fully residential neighborhood, single-family. No apartments, it's houses, it's part of the neighborhood right there. And so I don't understand how taking a complete residential area and demolishing the, it's the biggest lot on the block, and then make it a commercial spot is helping to grow, or however you want to phrase it, the beautification or the growth of Yuba City when it's destroying a complete residential spot. There are commercial spots across the street, like I said, on Franklin Avenue, on both spots. But that section of Franklin Avenue, quite honestly, is the best-looking block on Franklin Avenue. You go towards 99, there's all the commercial stuff, it looks all misfit. Traffic is horrible already. Traffic's horrible on Franklin and Gray during different times of day where it gets backed up halfway down to the high school and everything. So I don't understand how bringing commercial into residential is profiting the city, other than tax money, any benefit or the residents of that part of the town, including myself. I'm literally two, two houses away from it. And then another point I kind of want to make is, in the paperwork, it talks about how the wood fence has to be torn down because it's non-conforming. Well, if it's not, if it's non-conforming then, and it's non-conforming now, why hasn't it already been taken care of by the property owner? That kind of, to me, just already shows what kind of neighbor they are. If they're gonna own the property and already know that they have non-conforming stuff, and they're not taking care of it, what's the future gonna be like? And so I'd like you seriously to consider it. How would you like it if a commercial building got built two doors down from you in your neighborhood? Understand that we're on, you know, two fairly busy streets in Yuba City. That doesn't make it a reason to destroy our neighborhood. So that's all I've got, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Other public comments on this item? Absolutely.
Can I ask, Ms. Gorsy?
Yes.
What kind of medical facility is it gonna be?
It's a, I have two doctors, they are doctors. And this is a, like, it's a medical practice, you know. Not it's gonna be too many doctors, you know, just only she is a, only now is it a, my oldest doctor. Or she can, she can ask you, you can ask her, and she is.
So, Madam Chair, we really would need her to come to the microphone because it's not gonna pick it up at all.
Recording, yes. So if you wouldn't mind going to, Ms. Gorsy? Could you go to the microphone, please? Thank you. I sometimes forget that we have these Zoom meetings, and we need to capture your comments.
Hi, my name is Sakina Gorsy, and I'm mother of the doctor Gorsy, her name's Smala Gorsy. And what was the question, you know, can you repeat?
The question was what type of medical, or what type of practice was...
Like a practice, you know, like as the general, the doctor, you know.
General practitioner.
Yeah, she is internal medicine.
Internal, okay.
Yes.
All right, hope that answers your question. All right, all right, thank you. If I hear no other questions on this item, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to our commissioners. We'll start with you, Commissioner Adams.
Can I, if any other information you need, she is online.
Okay, thank you.
Ashley, can you bring the map back up, please? When I drove this, one of my concerns is that this is a really tough spot, and you have the vacant lot across the way that they've torn that building down. You have Jack and Jill, which is a challenge there as well. With the In-N-Out, you have the school. Then you have the access that comes in on that one street that feeds, is it Barrett? Is it South Barrett? I've lived in this area, so I'm very familiar with some of the challenges there. So when I look at it and I think of a medical facility, is the plan to tear it down and build another facility there? Or is it to use this current home and remodel it?
Can you hear me? This is Dr. Gorsy.
Yes, thank you, hi, Dr. Gorsy, yes.
Okay, hi there. So I am internal medicine. So the plan is to use the existing building. I guess in a way aesthetically, bring up the building because it does need to be, you know, updated on the outside a bit. And then also add maybe a restroom. But as far as exam rooms and everything else, I actually have adequate space to get patients in there. And this is gonna be a, it's gonna be a private practice. So if you look at a lot of private practices, they're actually kind of discreet. So, you know, it's not like a, it's not like a prompt care or like an urgent care, whether it's flashing lights or anything like that. These are patients who are gonna be established, they're gonna have appointments. You know, so I, I understand the concern of that gentleman, you know, who's worried about, you know, I know he's a couple houses down, but I do know on, I wanna say maybe Franklin, there's also a dental clinic that also, I think it was a household, it was a residential lot that was converted into a dental clinic. I think there's a lot of potential on that side of the, you know, of town. And even, I've even talked to pharmacy because I'm gonna have to keep certain medications on hand. And there's no pharmacy, until you get to Lincoln Avenue, Lincoln Road, there's actually no pharmacy around. I think it would be an asset, but, I mean, you guys would know the needs of that area.
Okay, thank you.
So it sounds like, just to clarify, Dr. Gorsy, that you're not planning to destroy the structure that's remaining?
No, I would actually, if anything, I would try to revamp, maybe, you know, add new siding. We've worked on the roof, the landscape. I mean, I would try to, I would not try to, you know, be a pest or, you know, have cranes or anything that would disrupt the area around it. Like I mentioned, private practices are pretty discreet because there's also, you know, HIPAA stuff, so it's, you know, we don't, we're not out there advertising or, you know, with blaring lights or anything like that. So we would keep it very calm and hush, and we'd have it by schedule and, you know, that way. Even traffic is, you know, the outflow, inflow coming in, it would be limited.
Thank you.
No, thank you. I just, I'm concerned because once we make it commercial, it's forever commercial. Wouldn't this be better as a use permit situation, more so than a zone change?
So Chair Blake, commissioners, the goal is to not have a home occupation. The goal is to basically convert this existing single-family home into a professional office. And when you do that type of conversion, that's beyond what is normally considered permissible in a, in a single-family residential neighborhood. So that's why we've had to go to the situation of a general plan amendment and a rezoning. Now, I do want to say, and I totally hear what the public said, and I would say, if any of you go up to the Chico area, I grew up in the Chico area. And I remember as a kid, there were a lot of roads that were smaller, two-lane roads. They've since widened to four lanes. And they had the similar thing happen there, where there was a street that got a little bit busier, and you started to see some of the homes get converted to professional offices. It's definitely, it's not unique. And the, you know, the professional office that Dr. Gorsy is looking to have, we felt would be compatible with the neighborhood because of the quiet nature of it. Thanks.
Would there be restrictions on the improvements that could be done to ensure that the home remains, or the unit that's there in the future, remains consistent with the neighborhood aesthetics? So that we're not creating a commercial district within a residential district that then starts to take on a different look as, and again, we're doing it based on this person coming in and asking, but then it's forever commercial. And then it falls under the commercial rules, but it still remains in an R1 zone. So I want to look at, into the future of ensuring that we aren't creating a situation that then the next person tears it down and builds a two-story commercial building because now it's allowed. How do we avoid some of those things until the rest of the neighborhood starts to come along to that area?
Yeah, I think the, some of the guardrails that we've tried to put on the application that deal with the X overlay is that if there's going to be any additional intensification of the site, because we were able to exempt this project from environmental review with a very specific exemption. If someone comes in, wants to do something more intense, then that's gonna need to be analyzed environmentally. And it kind of gives the city another crack at the apple, so to speak. But as far as, you know, requiring that it maintain a residential feel to it, you know, we don't have anything in our codes that would allow for that. You know, so at this point, we have, you know, the applicant who's saying, no, I don't intend to, you know, demolish the home and build something new. I intend to work with the existing residents, improve it, and then have a professional office. But I think some of the guardrails are for, that we felt comfortable with was, you know, saying if there was beyond an office, then it would need to have additional review completed for the project.
I'm not sure that makes me feel better, but I need to sit with that for a minute. The others, it sounds like it's gonna have limited, limited services, you know, a couple of doctors, so therefore, are traffic concerned because we obviously didn't look at that because it's exempt from our SEQUA review? Parking?
Yeah, so...
How do we are going to address parking on that lot?
So the, they're gonna have to come in with a plan after, assuming, let's assume this project is approved. Then they'll have to put together a plan showing for the professional office that they comply with the parking requirements, that they meet all the requirements, including going through and updating, meeting ADA requirements, et cetera.
Because one of my largest concerns related to parking is how they back out because that area, again, is quite congested. And you get people in that turn lane, and you get the kids from the school, you've got the Jack and Jill group, I mean, it gets pretty dicey, so...
Yeah, luckily, I think it was noted earlier, that is one of the larger parcels lots in the area. So it does, it absolutely has that working for it.
Just, yeah, I'm concerned about people pulling in and then trying to back out, that there's roadways, so. Okay, those are my concerns.
So I have a couple of questions. So it's my understanding that they intend to use the existing building. What level of improvements do they intend to make to that building in order to be able to convert it to a C1 use and use it for medical offices? I mean, are you looking at any, are you tearing down some things and adding, or just adding to what's there now, or...
We haven't received a building permit application yet, so we don't know the exact scope. We have talked very clearly with the applicant that that, a building permit will be required, there will be design review, you have to meet all the development standards.
Okay.
So it sounds like, from what we've heard tonight, they're gonna try to keep it pretty, pretty much the same structure, maybe adding, you know, new siding, et cetera. But we don't know the exact scope because we haven't received the plans.
And is it the intent of the applicant to have anybody live in that house? Parts of the home that aren't being used for the commercial use?
From my understanding in our discussions, that is not the intent, it will just be...
It's not the intent, so it's strictly 100% business operated. And then I wanted to address the issue the gentleman brought up on the fencing. So the wood fence that's on Franklin, is that, is that a conforming use for residential?
It has to be setback from the sidewalk. So you can have a wooden fence, but there's supposed to be a certain, a certain distance of setback.
Is it non-conform, the more of the non-conforming piece because it wouldn't work for, for commercial at all? Based on material and...
It is non-conforming because it's not setback from the sidewalk.
Okay, okay, so it is truly non-conforming at the moment. But part of your development requirements will be to tear that fence down. I mean, I think I remember reading that, and then you'll have another fence built that will be conforming.
Correct, correct.
And I'm assuming there is no intent to have any kind of ingress, egress off of Franklin? Is that correct? This will be strictly off of Gray?
From my understanding, we saw a very conceptual kind of site layout in our analysis phase. It was, it was quite conceptual, like I said, we haven't received the formal plans. But from what we saw, most of the, all of the access will be off of Gray Avenue. But there will be, you know, backout space so that you're not backing out onto Gray.
Okay, because I mean, ingress, egress on Franklin will just be, I mean, Commissioner Adams brought a great point with the parking, but that's just gonna be, I mean, I would hope that you'd never do that, let people come in and off of Franklin, because that's a very busy road.
Yeah, and Public Works has analyzed it as well. And when a building permit is submitted, they'll, they'll see it as well, and it has to meet all of the requirements. They weren't, they weren't in support of egress on Franklin Avenue, so in the future, they won't be either.
Okay, great, that's all my questions, thank you so much.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions also, somewhat truncated now, the two of my fellow commissioners asked those, and they've got answers. One of the questions I have, and it's, it's been some time since I knew what this number was, but at one time, the average trips per day for a residential unit was 10 per day. Do we know what the estimated trips per day is currently for a medical office? And is my 10 per day accurate at one point in time?
You know, that is. So that's the 10 per day and the peak hour trips, yeah, you remember well. You know, it really goes into the, what the projection is for the highest intense use. And so, so one of the guardrails for this property is we're saying C1. So C1 is not allowed to have uses such as a car wash or a drive-through. It would be a neighborhood, the worst case, you know, and Steph looked at this, it's, we're at the corner of the intersection of two major arterials in the city. Over time, it gets harder, you see the residential usually, usually deteriorates over time because of the location and the traffic that is there. And so you see this push to convert to office space. You see it along Walton Avenue, you see it along Bridge Street. And right now, they have a home occupancy permit, is my understanding, or their works, they have it where it's an existing office there right now. So when Steph looked at it, we looked at worst case, okay, you swing, then they sell it in a year from now, they knock it over, they turn it into a Dollar General, would be the worst case. I guess the most, I could say the highest intense use. Really with that, though, with the overlay, it would have to be environmentally analyzed, and then we would be... and then we would be, uh, plan-checked, you know, so it would still meet our zoning codes for the commercial use, where you would have to have sound walls built, you would have to have, um, the required parking lot, the 50% shading, setbacks, ingress and egress to make something like that happen. And it would be a really difficult site besides a small office space, and so, but there's still checks in place, in place that they would have to come through the city's design, um, in order to meet all of our design standards for the zoning of C1. So, I don't know if I answered your question, but if you assume, um, worst case, a, a Dollar General, you know, or high, um, you know, use neighborhood market, I think they're, they, they say maybe as high as 50 trips, um, per hour, a- at the, at the, um, at the high, uh, but at the same time, you're at the intersection of two major arterials, um, that will continue to get busy.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was, um, in, in looking at this application, I was reminded of one of my more favorite movies called Blasphemy in the Past, I don't know if anybody's seen that, with Christopher Walken and Sissy Spacek, and it's a story of a guy who, who goes underground in a thermonuclear hole for 35 years, and during that time, his house gets torn down, the neighborhood gets converted to a malt shop in the 50s, and then it turns into a, a bar, and then it's abandoned, and so there's this progression, as you mentioned, over time, and, uh, certainly understand Commissioner, um, Adams', uh, concern about the change in use, understanding that there are, are obviously certain constraints based on the size, uh, and, and other attributes as well, but that was one of my, one of my big questions. Did I hear, uh, reference to a pharmacy being included in this building?
So, um, not a, not like a commercial pharmacy, not like a Walgreens or anything, but, um, in order to, um, meet certain codes, um, for clinics, I have to store certain medications in the clinic, um, vaccines and stuff like that. So it's, um, just talking to other pharmacists, um, they were mentioning that the, the next pharmacy over was actually Lincoln, um, Lincoln Road or Lincoln Avenue. So it would actually, like, if somebody needed to come in for a vaccine or, uh, get checked out for something, it would actually work out.
Thank you. And, so, we're not talking about a full-blown commercial pharmacy, if I understand correctly? Second thing is, just as a-
No, not like, um, no, not like a, not like that.
That would, that would increase traffic dramatically. And just as a point of clarification, unless I miss my mark, there is a pharmacy, um, straight west of there, at the intersection of, uh, Walton and Franklin Road, right across from the Chevron Station, so it's-
Maybe, yeah, maybe that far out, mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, there are several examples of, of this type of, of, of use that, that I think demonstrate good compatibility. You've got Loughlin Spence, uh, Engineering in the corner of, uh, Live Oak, and I forget where that's at. And then right around the corner from that, you have Dr. Clay, I don't, is it still Dr. Clay's office? Um, right, right behind what used to be Taco Bell Boot Barn, uh, that was a residential residence converted to a, uh, an opt, optometry office. In fact, my father worked there for years, so, and that, that fits in with the park and the surrounding residences flawlessly, so, um, I think there are instances where this works well. So, uh, that's all the, all the, all the questions I have, all the comments I have, so thank you.
Thank you. Could you explain the reason for needing to relocate the transit bus stop?
Yeah, certainly. Um, so when we received the project application, UBSutter Transit reached out to us about the existing bus stop. There's an existing bus, bus stop on Gray Avenue, just north of Franklin Road. So it, it's by bus stop, it's the UBSutter Transit sign posted to a speed limit sign. Um, so basically, if, you know, if the access to this site is all from that driveway, then the driveway would be blocked by the buses when they're stopping. So that's why UBSutter Transit requested that we do something about that and relocate that. So we added that to the overlay zone to just basically have the applicant work with Public Works to address that situation.
Understood, thank you, Ashley. And, um, hold on, I had a question. Where'd it go? For the doctor. Oh, doctor, are you a Medi-Cal provider?
Uh-
Or private?
Medicaid, Public Cal, uh, Public Aid.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Medicaid, um, Medicaid and Medicare, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other further questions for?
I have one follow-up question. So, doctor, just real quick, are any of the medications you think you'll be required to keep on site, are they considered narcotics?
Uh-
And if so-
They, no, there would be no controlled, um, I'm kind of on the fence of maybe doing a Suboxone clinic, um, but I, it, you have to keep us safe, and there's certain protocols we have to do. Um, we have to keep certain things locked up, but I'm not, I'm not there yet, so.
Because that's what I'm getting at, I mean, if there's narcotics, and you're talking just a single-family residence-looking place with narcotics, that's going to be, you know, cherry for somebody who wants to break in and steal.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I'm just curious if, are there security provisions that are going to be required, you know, to keep those types of narcotics, if in fact they exist there?
Yeah.
In the, in the, in the requirements for development? Will there be anything?
Yeah, that's correct, um, yeah, I'm not there yet, so.
We, from my understanding, in the municipal code, we don't have a specific requirement regarding narcotics control. However, we, this, this proposal is for C1 only.
Okay, okay.
So only the uses that are allowed in C1 will be per, pro, permitted, and a medical office is one of those. So if a pharmacy isn't permitted, then if it's not in C1, it's not permitted.
Right, okay, thank you.
Well, d- do I have a, perhaps a motion for this agenda item? I will say this is of concern. We don't have very many residential, you know, opportunities in our community. We have a lot of unused commercial space, so that's why this is a concerning ask. But do I hear no motion? Regardless? I hear no motion. Therefore, the agenda item doesn't pass. Well, there's two firsts.
I would-
The overlay and the never having a-
Clarify that you're not approving or disproving tonight, you're making a recommendation to the city council.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Dad, yes. Thank you. So this will go before our city council?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, all right. So look to the city council agenda, should you want to speak to this matter further. Okay.
Now, do, so just so I'm clear, by not making a motion, the default motion is that the commission is recommending denial of the rezon and overlay zone?
No recommendation.
No recommendation.
It'll go to council.
It will go to council.
No recommendation. They'll, they're going to-
There you go. Just punch this pilot in.
Thank you. All right. So we will move on to agenda item number seven, Tenanted Parcel Map 22-02, to create two parcels at 1245 Kalusa Avenue, at the UBSutter Marketplace. So I will ask Mr. Doug Libby to give us staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair Blake, Commissioners. So this item is a parcel map 2202, as you said, it's proposing to divide 5.8 acres into two parcels. Parcel A would be 5.4 acres in size, and Parcel B would be point, just over 0.4 of an acre, or 19,000 square feet, um, in size. This is actually proposed at our, um, UBSutter Marketplace, or the mall, and, uh, you would probably reckon the parcels currently consist of one business, which is Hobby Lobby, we have a former Sears building, uh, one vacant building, and the parking lot area. You can see from the plan that the parcel that is out there today, let's see. There we go. Um, you can see the, where Panera is located, the parcel currently wraps around Panera, and there's a Jack-in-the-Box business that is currently right there. Property is general planned, regional commercial, has a zoning of C3, so it allows for a full range of commercial uses. The minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet, so with the proposed parcel B being 19,000 square feet, it significantly exceeds that. The parcel map that is before you shows that parcel A will comprise most of the land, and then parcel B is the smaller piece right here, located between the Panera and Jack-in-the-Box. So based upon our analysis of the project, um, and subject to complying with the project conditions, staff has concluded that none of the following findings of our municipal code in the MAP Act, which talk about denial of parcel map, this project would qualify for, and those are listed in your staff report in here. It basically talks about a project, uh, you are to deny it if it's inconsistent with the general plan or a specific plan, if it's not physically suitable, um, and the design of the subdivision is inconsistent with, uh, certain city rules. We found that this proposed project is consistent with those. So the, for environmental review, project has been determined to be exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA Guidelines Section 15315 for minor land divisions, and the reason for that is because the project is consistent with the zoning, there's no variances or exceptions being requested. The project was not involved in a previous land division of a larger parcel, uh, it has non-excessive slopes, and, uh, none of the exceptions to a categorics, categorical exemption would apply. So staff is recommending that your commission conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution determining the project is exempt from environmental review and approve, uh, Tenanted Parcel Map 2202, subject to the conditions outlined in your staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. So before we turn it back to the commissioners, let's start a public hearing, so don't go too far away. Any questions or concerns about agenda item number seven? If you have any, please approach the podium. If not, we'll close that public hearing and bring it right back to our fellow commissioners. So we'll start with you, Commissioner Carey. Shall you have any questions or concerns?
I, Mr. Libby, I just, I, I have a question regarding, um, the allocation of parking spaces based on the existing uses on the new parcel configuration, was that looked at and determined to be consistent with zoning?
So, excellent question. As this is only a parcel map right now, we do not have a, um, development project before us that we could say that, hey, you have an office that has so many square feet, here's your ratio to parking, we're not to that point. However, uh, when they come in for, for any new, uh, development project, then they will have to demonstrate that they meet the parking requirements, and they, and they are aware of that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, there's, there's a couple of layers to that. You've, you've got the remainder of the, of the shopping mall, and, and that parking was put in place, um, years ago to facilitate that square footage, and I know the uses have changed, and Panera's gone in, um, and obviously, they're not creating parcel B just to create parcel B, so there's, there has to be some future use, you're going to lose those places, so.
Yeah, there's been some preliminary discussion, but it's, I think we all know there's been significant changes in retail and these type of commercial spaces, and, and so they're trying to, to maximize what they have there.
So worst-case scenario, um, the mall, when this map is recorded and finalized, the mall, based on square footage, will maintain, I'm, I'm, I'm stating this in form of an assumption, not a, not a statement of fact, will maintain adequate parking based on the square footage of the mall. Assuming there is a change, parcel B's pulled out, and they are shy, but the mall has extra, could there be a easement reciprocation to share park-
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect, thank you, sir. Perfect, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
No, I, I, my question related to parking as well, so thank you so much.
Can I just request that you fix the size of the parking at the mall?
Door ding heaven.
Yes, I'm a, I definitely am a, a, a receiver of door dings, because those parking spaces are too small. But no, I, I think it's a, a reasonable request, um, based on the changes, like you've said, in the, in the industry and the use of space, and that area of the parking lot is actually a difficult location in that, in that flow of, um, of the mall layout, so this may be a good way to, to get that fixed.
Yes, we do live in UBSity, people drive big vehicles here, so. And with that, do the applicants have considerations already for businesses in which would occupy those parcels? Out of curiosity.
So we've had some, we've had some preliminary discussions, um, with them, uh, something of, uh, professional office potentially going in there.
Okay, excellent, all right, thank you. Any further questions? All right, so I'll look to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution determining that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines Section 15315, minor land divisions, and approve Tenanted Parcel Map 22-02, subject to the conditions of approval provided.
I'll second it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item passes. So we'll move to our next agenda item, number eight, Use Permit 14-07, Amendment to Allow the Construction of a New Approximately 5,700 Square Foot Addition to the Existing Twin Rivers Charter School at 2510 Live Oak Boulevard. Mr. Libby?
I will remain in the hot seat.
Yes, you will, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This next, uh, project, as you know, is located in the northeast part of our city, at 2510 Live Oak Boulevard. The Twin Rivers Charter School, or TRCS, is a public, uh, transitional kindergarten through eighth grade school, developed on 5.84 acres of a 10-acre site. Uh, access provided by Live Oak Boulevard, there is a pedestrian connection, uh, provided through Northridge Park, which is located just to the southwest, and as you can see, the city's municipal water treatment plant is located, uh, joins the property immediately to the south. Uh, the use permit for the project was approved in December 2014, um, project number, uh, Use Permit 1407, and because the property is actually zoned residential, uh, you can get a use permit for a school in the residential zone, so that's how the project originally got started. Looking at an aerial, you can see the existing school facilities, and it will complement the school on the greenness of their turf. You can see the existing parking on the south side of the school, and the indicated in red on the north side is the proposed building. So as you noted, Chair Blake, the project would add 5,000, 5,700 square foot, uh, building to that north side, uh, which would add an additional transitional kindergarten classroom, a visual and performing arts room, some flexible multipurpose space, and restroom facilities. Now, before I go on to the floor plan, I wanted to clarify that the floor plan shows two transitional kindergarten classrooms that you'll see. However, they already have one out there today, and so per the state guidelines, they have to add a second one. So this building, they'll move both pre-K classrooms to be side-by-side to one another, which you'll see in a moment. Shows the floor plan, but we're going to zoom into that right here, and you'll see on the west side of the proposed building, you have the visual and performing arts room, there's some, uh, restrooms, there's storage, you have the multipurpose flex space, which, and I'll note the accordion kind of wall between the two, so they could have one large room if the school needs, or two separate spaces. They've got the two pre-K rooms, bathrooms in each classroom, as well as a faculty restroom. This rendering did not come in until this morning, so we, we plopped it into the, the presentation, so it wasn't here in time, but it kind of gives you an indication of what the building's going to look like. It matches the architecture of the existing school, and we included in your staff report some of the, um, the renderings which show what the new building will look like and how it matches the existing school. I think this slide is actually important, because it shows that on the right-hand side, uh, you'll see the proposed building, but what I think is important to note is, the wrought iron fence is going to be continued to the north of, of the building, and that will, um, provide security. The landscaping will be also extended to the north to, uh, this point here. The sidewalk, the turf, as well as curb and gutter, will also be extended. So at the end of, uh, the last school year, there were 455 enrolled students. Uh, I'm proud to say that my 14-year-old son was one of them, and, uh, he got promoted through their, uh, ceremony in June, so I've had fond memories of TRCS. Actually, I've had, uh, two children that have gone from kindergarten through eighth grade with them. with them. So the addition of the 20 students, as I noted earlier, will allow them to comply with state guidelines, and the remainder of this space will be utilized by the existing student population that is already there. So with regard to traffic, they did a traffic study in 2014, prepared and analyzed for 470 students. The addition of 20 students puts them just slightly over what was originally analyzed. The staff took that into account and determined that we did not need an additional traffic study for this additional classroom. City parking standards require a minimum of 45 parking spaces to serve the existing school and this proposed amendment, and they have a total of 76 paved stripe parking spaces that exist today. The frontage improvements, as I noted on that slide earlier, this condition talks about, from their original 2014 approval, that if you extend further to the north, these are the things you need to do. And I kind of walked you through what it is that they're planning to do. Now, it's not going to go to the full north end of the property, they're only extending it to where this, just to the north of where this proposed building will be. So we did add a condition to require the existing landscaping, curb and gutter along Live Oak Boulevard, to be extended. And I should note that they also have recently, we processed a lotline adjustment for them because they actually have one site but a couple different parcels, to basically make sure that the school is all on one developed portion. So with regard to environmental review, we determine the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to guidelines section 15314 for minor school additions. They actually have one in there for schools. The determination is based on the addition falls within the existing school property. The proposed addition does not increase the original student capacity by more than 25% or 10 classrooms, whichever is less, and staff has determined that none of the exceptions under categorical exemption applies. So based upon our analysis, we were required to make certain findings, which we think we can make in order to support the project. These are outlined in your staff report. The project is consistent with the general plan and has been designed to meet city standards. Staff is recommending that you conduct a public hearing and make the findings to adopt a resolution to approve use permit amendment 1407, which will allow them to add the 5,700 square foot addition that they proposed. I would note that the TRCS board president is here tonight to address the commission, Mike Paulston, and so that would conclude my comments. If you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, Doug. All right, so with that, I will open a public hearing on this use permit agenda item. Seeing no one run to the podium, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to my fellow commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Adams.
I do have a question. Does this project fall under the State Department of Architecture approval for the schools?
Yes, you will have to, they will have to go through and get approvals from the state as...
They are?
Yeah.
I was hoping charter schools were exempt, sorry.
Yes, please.
Unfortunately, charter schools have come into the California public school system, and we're taking a broad beating like the public schools are, unfortunately. But yeah, we will have to do that.
Okay.
So what I wanted to address is, my name is Mike Paulston, Board President, Twin Rivers Charter School.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate all your hard work. And I'd like to compliment Doug Libby and his staff, they've been amazing to work with, and our Hillbird's team has been amazing also, so you're kind of behind the scenes here. The real purpose of this, you'd say, why do you need that for really what state's requiring us to do is add one TK transition? Well, fortunately, we've done a great job with our budget, and we are 42% free and reduced at our school. Some people don't understand that. This can allow us to, the multipurpose room, we're going to be able, we have an after-school program now, is 70% of our school is staying because of free and reduced, it's free after-school tutoring, I will call it tutoring, not babysitting. But we have 70% at a reduced rate, and like I said, 42% are attending for free after school. Our intent is not just to have a little school where you take care of kids after school because you're not making any money on it. Our intent is to educate those students after school, and it's going on right now. It's amazing what's going on. So our performing arts program is second to none, so we wanted to add our performing arts director a nice big room to be proud of, just adjacent to that and a gym. We have a great facility also. So that's the purpose of this whole thing, is to better the community and the students within our community. Last thing I'll say is this, we have a dress code there, and what is amazing about that dress code, the April Lane kids don't know they're any different from the wealthy that are there. And so by having that, we're able to keep kids together and educate them on a same-level basis, which is really important. You can tell it's a passion of mine, so...
Awesome.
Any other questions, or I appreciate your hard work on this project?
No, no other questions. I'm excited to see the expansion.
No questions for me, sir. Thank you.
So I work in zero-to-five world, and transitional kindergarten coming to fruition and becoming a component tied into our educational system is just beyond what I've ever wanted and dreamed of for our youngest learners. And so seeing that you're adding a TK classroom makes me super happy because the quality is superb, and I drive by the campus daily because I live off of Pease Road area, and it's a beautiful campus. The traffic is so controlled, everyone in the community knows, you know, it's there. So it's just been a really beautiful fit in our community, and I'm glad to see you expanding and providing additional services for children. So thank you. So with that, if there are no further questions for staff or the applicants, we'll entertain a motion.
I would recommend that we adopt a resolution to determine the project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines section 15314, minor additions to school, and approve the use permit amendment 14-07, subject to the conditions of approval, to allow the construction of approximately 5,700-square-feet pre-engineered metal building at Twin Rivers Charter School located at 2510 Live Oak Boulevard.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right.
Excuse me, commissioners?
Yes, please.
Nick Papajon from the city attorney's office?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, so I was having some technical difficulties earlier and just wanted to mention for item six regarding the recommendation to the city council for the rezone and the general plan amendment. If the council or if the commissioners are, if they decided just to take no action, which you did, that's technically denial according to the code, and the applicant would need to make an appeal to the city council within 10 days. So I think that information just should be provided to the applicant. I don't know if they're still on, but it was technically denial if the commission decided not to act one way or the other.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification. Can I ask staff to follow up with the applicant for appropriate action?
Yeah, we'll take care of that tomorrow.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so we'll look to Doug for future agenda items.
So, Madam Chair, we are looking at canceling the October 12 meeting, so we would then come back again to meet on October 26. And for that meeting, we are tracking two applications to come before you. One is a, you might remember the, I think it was called the West Sanborn subdivision?
Yes.
Okay. Just, that was what, at the northwest corner of Sanborn and Bog? Well, just the property just immediately to the north of that is about just under 15 acres, and we are processing a subdivision map to divide that into 82 residential lots. So we're looking at that coming forward next month. We are also looking at a general plan amendment and a rezoning located on the north side of the North Calusa Frendage Road between Hooper and El Margarita, and it's proposing to take some office-designated land and change it to multifamily residential. So it's not going to have the development plan, they're still working on that, but it's just changing the land use to accommodate multifamily. So we'll have that for you next month. And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. So on October 26, we're all to wear our Halloween costumes. Nonetheless, we'll move to Ben Moody for the Development Services Director's report.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
You know, definitely a lot going on, the economy with the staff, really, I did a quick run-through, I think some of the big action items that have occurred over the last month is we're working on Open Counter, so it's a new software system that the city's working to put up. It's business-friendly, it's also will help just residents that, it's like the TurboTax for planning and zoning and for the building permit process. And so we're working staff behind the scenes to try to put the team together to try to really bring that forward, so it's a true web-based interface where people can really look into their zoning, what's allowed, and then help prep them for a building permit process or a business license. And so staff is working on that. We have the Chino Ranch, Doug talked about some of the items that are coming forward, and besides that, we're diligently working and not a lot of changes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so report of actions, oh, Carey just dismissed himself. For any updates from Sutter County Planning Commission, sorry. I didn't finish my thoughts, did I? So may we wait a few minutes? Is that all right with you guys? All right. Because we kind of need him to make the report.
Do we have a theme for our Halloween costume?
Let me think about it. I feel like we should do something about, you know, growth and building and...
Legos. We could come as Legos.
That's not Carey. No worries, sir. You're up, though, to give us an update about Sutter County Planning Commission?
Truck yards.
No. It will ever be resolved.
I live and die. As I stated before, my legacy on that commission will hinge on my actions with respect to truck yards. So that's really, we had two new ones proposed. I think we talked about that the last time I was here, so, yeah, that's truck yards.
Living in a shake-in, you guys.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, well, with that, we will adjourn this meeting at 7:03.